Good evening to everyone. Called February 20th, we're offering council meeting to order. I'm not aware of any changes that were made to the agenda that we have in front of us.
I'll move approval of agendas presented.
One second.
Paul and Saber?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item is communications. And before we invite anyone to speak, I've asked Chris to speak in regards to the Alliant Tree issue, I'll call it. We did extend an invite to the point person that we have at Alliant, but due to the short notice, she was unable to accept the invite. So, I've been in contact with both Chris and Nick, and there's been some holes kind of filled into what has happened to this point. So with that said, I'll give the floor to Chris.
I did send out to the council today, I sent a list of questions to Alliant, and gave you their responses, but in short, they acknowledged that the line of communications obviously was not what it should have been. Don't have any other explanation outside of the fact that it wasn't. We did talk a little bit more about communication and chain of command and who is to be communicated with. They have a subcontractor. That subcontractor did stop out to our public workshop and talk to a couple of our staff members. My comment back to the mayor was they should have known better than to just stop and talk to staff. But, the good news is that they've removed the trees for identification, they've removed the ribbon. My point back to Alliant was, first and foremost, before they put anything on trees, they need to have that communication with us first, and then have that communication with property owners nearby. My issue with Emily, what I told her today was, as soon as you put the ribbons up, you had to have known that our phones were going to start ringing. So, again, they acknowledged that. They did point out that they haven't really changed the manner in which they're trying to do line maintenance, but they have a clearance, and their clearance is three years' worth of maintenance, so they're trying to do line clearance every three years. My issue would be is they leave the trees looking horrendous. They acknowledge when they do that, though, that they will talk with staff about the full removal of the tree and a potential replacement. Can't provide any details to that because it was just a short conversation that I had today, but that's kind of the gist of where we're at so far. Like I said, they've acknowledged the issues. One of the trees in question was an ash tree that was marked, it likely will come down. But moving forward a little, we're communicating through Nick first, Nick through me then, if need be, but for the most part, they'll be handling the future communication through And then, we will identify, so obviously, we're trimming trees to meet our specifications too, they have to be 18 feet, 18 or 18 and a half feet clearance over the streets and nine feet over sidewalks, so if a tree, I think, is going to be trimmed in such a manner that it becomes a detriment at that point, then we take a look at full removal and replacement. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that I can, that you might have.
So their policy is three years maintenance?
Correct.
What is our ability or leverage to affect that policy?
We can, the issue is they have their rights to clear the lines. Could we talk to them about three years' worth? But we could, but it means more money to them, so how far we can get, I don't really know. But, the species of the trees in the right of ways are, we deal with it as well. Maples in our sewer system don't mix either. But, we did, in our conversation today, talk about the fact that we are newly designated or re-designated Trees in the USA, so the loss of trees in our right of way is a detriment, not just to, you know, Mount Vernon as far as aesthetics go, but what we're reckoned matched for as well. So, thankfully, they come in on the weekend and start pulling out trees before we had this conversation, so.
Is our agreement or their right of way rights, I don't know how we're going to determine, is that, is that a five-year, five-year, twenty? When does that come out? Or when is that open for discussion?
Five-year renewals.
Is that what it was?
Just renewed, we just renewed the franchise.
Yes, I thought, yeah.
In '17, we did?
When we did the franchise, but we did go back to the five-year renewal. They tried to go longer.
Yeah.
Eight or 10 or something.
Any other questions for Chris?
Not questions, but speaking from the sustainability side, culturally, Mount Vernon is a pretty green community by nature, and we want to support maintaining that reputation as much as possible.
Yeah, we did point out, too, the fact that we've been treating ash trees, but it's a mechanism to elongate the process more than it's to save the trees. So, we will eventually have to remove our ash trees, and of course, their removal on top of this definitely hinders us moving forward. But we have to have a conversation, too, about replacement trees, and they have a program by which we can purchase trees when they provide us trees, but watering those trees and having conversations with neighbors, there's a lot more that needs to get into. And I've watched their contractor go all the way up Highway 1, and it's just been clear cut.
Yeah, that's terrible.
All the way up, yeah, it does look horrendous.
Anybody else? All right, thank you for that, Chris and Nick. All right, let's go back. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on any item? If I may, did I? Mr. Crocker?
My name's Stan Crocker, I'm on 323 10th Avenue Southwest. And I want to say first that it was an interesting commentary about the difference between what the city does to our trees and what Alliant does to our trees. It's radically different. And I really appreciate what Chris and Eldon, is that right? Yeah. What they, the way they respect this community, the taxpayers, the homeowners, the neighbors, it's not always just, you know, it's important that the neighbor, that the people that own the house at the right of way have some kind of say in this, but it's just as important that the neighbors do. The whole community should actually have a say in what's going on and how they're approaching this. Do they really have to spread this out over three years? If that business plan isn't working, and they're leaving unhappy customers behind, why don't they make it an annual thing? Why would they not come in and trim on a more regular basis instead of coming in and just radically disrupting things? I want to say, too, and that's just, you know, this moment, but I want to circle back and say one thing, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak here as well. I have an issue with the part where you guys don't get to speak back, and it hits me every time I stand up here, I just thought of it again. I appreciate the reasoning behind it, I appreciate that this goes back to Scott Peterson's administration, and the purpose of it is to not challenge the people that are here. I'd actually prefer, I'm not saying that has to happen now, but certainly welcome if you want a little dialogue, conversation, questions. So I'm going to just throw that out there. What I wanted to say tonight is that on Thursday, I got called by a couple of neighbors, and I went out and drove our neighborhood, and I counted 47 trees wrapped in ribbons. And if I'd seen it without the warning, I would have assumed it was something, it would have been like some kind of campaign, breast cancer awareness came to mind immediately. I mean, it was a pink ribbon around these trees, and yet it was about destroying the trees. It was entirely possible to miss the point of what was going on as you're driving through the neighborhood, but there were, I counted 47 trees, probably about maybe 17 or 18 of our old growth, several in that medium range, and some were saplings this high. It boggles the mind that somebody made the effort to kneel down and put a pink ribbon around a tree calling for destruction on it, and yet they did. And then I found out from these folks that there was no, there was no communication at all. And when they sought communication, when they chased somebody down, when one of my neighbors chased somebody down and said, "What, why are those two trees in front of my house today?" Well, we had to take them down. And when she objected, she was basically told that she had no recourse. You have no options here. That was it. Just that simple. And that's not right, especially considering that was a contractor for Alliant, because as we've already seen here, Alliant didn't bother to show up. The communication is the biggest issue here, it's very frustrating for a lot of, a lot of people, not in just this issue this week, but in general about the way they maintain these trees, what they do. We've all seen it. It's horrendous. The only reason that some of those trees on 10th Avenue need to come down is because of the damage that Alliant did to it previously. And it's just, it's out of control, and their arrogance towards this is really very frustrating to a lot of people I've heard from. And by the way, there'd be more folks here tonight if it wasn't student teachers conference, I want to make that, make you aware of that. But I said, "I have greetings from many people." My phone has been burning. So what I want to say is more than that, though, and I want, this may seem like a leap, but it's not. Couple weeks ago, Elon Musk put a rocket up into the air that was not supposed to go there. It was going to, it was going to be the most, as he said, it could be either the next step forward in space travel or the incredible fireworks display. He was told it would never happen. Heaviest rocket ever, it's on a route, it's on routed to the Mars orbit right now. That same man has been a leader in energy efficiency. He's developed a home battery that will one day, very soon, be able to supply our houses with power that we take from solar shingles on our roof. Susan and I are about to put them on the roof, they've been available now for a year and a half. There are solar panels, there's wind energy on site. My point being that very soon, this industry that we're feeling bullied by, that many residents are feeling bullied by, is going to be a radically different kind of industry. It's not going to have the bullying power, it's going to be the kid in high school that grew up and realized he no longer held sway over anybody. These guys have got to start rethinking their role in the world of moving solar energy or wind energy in from our farms to the city. But they're not going to be doing as much of this residential cabling, and it seems to me that they should be thinking about that now, and maybe rethinking their brand, and thinking how they go forward with this. It's a different kind of world out there, and it's not happening, this is not sci-fi. This is, this is five years out, you guys, this is five years from now, most of the houses in Mount Vernon could be running on their own energy. But simultaneously, and this is the real insidious thing about this, as they are being uncommunicative, and in the minds of many residents, arrogant, when questioned about the way they're cutting a tree, why they're destroying a tree, even as that's happening, they're pushing legislation in Des Moines right now with a lopsided government that is going to drive back all the successes of the last decade in energy efficiency in Iowa. It's incredible. Two bills, anybody got those bills? I can't think of the, there's two bills in the House right now. One will deregulate electricity companies, just deregulate them, they can do anything at this point. And the other one just dials back energy efficiency. And I would really like to see, and again, I'm bringing this to you from other people at this point, I would really like to see this council take, you know, make a stand with the state legislature, and register the idea that this community is energy efficient driven, and this community is about its trees, and that we do not support the wholesale stripping back of gains that have happened in the last decade. I would like to see this city council make, take this action, and actually send that statement to Des Moines. It was not on my mind when I called, I started calling you guys on Thursday. And by the way, Thursday, that offer was made to Alliant. Why are we finding out today at noon that they weren't going to be represented here tonight? I think we should ponder that. How much or how little do they care? Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Is there anybody else that would like to just comment?
Yes, thank you. David Osterberg, out of at 318 Second Avenue Northwest. I'm going to follow up with what Stan said. First of all, it wasn't my neighborhood where the trees were being affected, but what Stan started talking about on how we regulate these monopolies is what I want to talk about, because it has very much to do with this city as well. Alliant, there were two bills, as Stan said, and one of them died, but the other one is very much alive, and it's a pretty terrible bill, because it would allow regulated utility companies, Mid-American or Alliant, those are the ones that we have, who are monopolies. They're profit-making monopolies, except they're regulated. They're regulated by you guys, because you could actually say something about when they started doing something about trees that citizens didn't like. So there is regulation here, but what they're trying to do in the Senate right now, it's Senate 2311 is the name of the bill, and it's just changed its name again, it's going to be debated, I think, on Monday next. And what that would do is just go after solar, like you guys have on the roof, like I have on my garage. They believe that solar is costing them money, and therefore, they want to do quite a few things to make it harder for people to get solar. And by taking away part of the way they are regulated, they'd then be able to do something like put me into a rate class. I'm no longer a residential rate class, I'm the whatever the rate class is with solar assist. And then, they decide that with those guys, and there are only 1,500 of us in the entire, out of the 400,000 people that they have serving, about 1,500 people would then have, say, an extra charge of $20 a month on top of what you would pay them. And so Tom and I, having solar, would certainly, all of a sudden, see a new charge. If they can get out of the regulation, which they're trying to do, they could do that. What they're, and we already know that they have been trying this in the past, they tried to get out of something called net metering, you know, running the meter backwards that you guys all know about, because we get it here in the city. They couldn't do that. When they tried to do their last rate case, they wanted to increase for residential your fixed charge, the mandatory fee that you have to pay just to be hooked up, by 30%, while they were going to increase the rates by, the kilowatt hour charge by 10%. Clearly, going after people who either are really energy efficient or poor, because poor people don't use much electricity, by the way, I have good data on that, or who have solar panels. So, when Stan says, "Maybe you should take a position on this," it wouldn't be a bad idea, because the city of Mount Vernon does have solar, and they are trying to figure out ways that they're going to be able to say, "We love renewables, as long as we own them, but if we don't own them, we might be able to do some things that the utility board would never allow them to do, but this new piece of legislation would allow them to do." And it's going to be very interesting to see whether they can pull this off. And this is something that I think the city could be interested in. Again, 2311, trying to get out of some kind of regulation, because the way I would write the letter is to say, "We just found that we could regulate our monopoly, and because we could, we got a better decision." We sure hope that the Iowa legislature does not remove the power that the utilities board also has over this monopoly, to try to make them a more like an unregulated rather than a regulated monopoly. That's where I'd start the sentence. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, anything that, anything you wanted to share from your viewpoint?
They're accurate. I mean, yes, I put solar panels on, I taught 22 classes in Lynn County, and I was asked to do the same program in Johnson County this coming summer. So, teachers inquire there, what, kind of along the same line, since then, eight years, I think, into a Prius with 48 miles per gallon, and now, there's some consideration about adding a surcharge to people like that, people like that, because we're not paying our first year a little due tax, so.
Stop, that's been said, too. Right.
That's my only observation.
Thanks, you both. Thanks, Tom. Joe, Arne, is Joe here?
No.
Move on to the consent agenda, approval of council minutes, February 5th, approval of liquor license for golf club, and approval of cigarette license for yacht landing.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Arne, two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, public hearing. Public hearing for an ordinance, amending and correcting ordinance 11-6-2017A for providing a general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended Mount Vernon urban renewal area, the city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, offering community school district and other taxing districts to be paid to a special fund for payments of principal and interest on loans, money advanced to and in indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Mount Vernon urban renewal area. Amendment number five. With all that said, I will open said public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on this item? Saying no one, I close the public hearing. Move to F2. Ordinance 2-20-2018A, amending and correcting ordinance 11-6-2017A for providing a general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended Mount Vernon urban renewal area, in the city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, state of Iowa, by the benefit, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District and other taxing districts to be paid to a special fund for payment of principal interest on loans, money advanced and advanced to and in indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Mount Vernon urban renewal area. Amendment five. Chris?
I didn't write this one.
You're lucky, it was your birthday, and you take it away.
This is the cleanup ordinance for that legal description. If everybody's in favor, the only thing I would ask is approve the first reading, then maybe wait second, third, and go to the final reading. Because it's a controversial issue.
This was the one we already passed, but yeah, the language that got added.
It was handed to you that night.
Any questions? I would move approval of ordinance number 2-20-2018A, amending and correcting ordinance 11-6-2017A. Local call?
Brad Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
And although I'm generally not in favor, I would, how do we do this?
You would move to suspend rules?
Move to suspend rules and approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 2-20-2018A, amending and correcting ordinance 11-6-2017A.
I'll second that. Any comments? Local call, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Brad Bush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
All right. Next item, public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Midwest Development Company. Resolution 2-20-2018A approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Mount Vernon and Midwest Development Company.
This is the final public hearing and document for the development agreement between the city and Midwest Scoville for spring metal heights. This will be a phased development with the overall, excuse me, the overall rebates of up to $675,000 over the five phases. Phase one is actually under construction today, and I don't expect probably not to reach that if everything goes well, so. You have any questions?
Are their construction actually broken ground, under construction?
Not on actual, or not on actual homes, but they've, they've started putting sewer I would imagine that the weather, the last three or four days, is putting an amp on everything.
Anybody have any further questions? Do we need to do the public hearing for this? So I open the public hearing on that item. Anybody that'd like to comment on? Add was up, you got the time.
I know, I'm not volunteering for anything.
And I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Scott, for coming to remind us. Otherwise, is there any other questions on this item? You entertain a motion?
I'd like motion to approve resolution 2-20-2018A, the development of the city and the West Development Company.
Any comments? Local call, please.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Brad Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
All right. Now we're back up to F1, with those following along. Ordinance 1-15-2018A, amending chapter 90.03, mandatory connections of the Mount Vernon Municipal Code, third final reading. Chris, anything? I don't think anything new's come along.
No, I just made the changes, there was one typo on the last, and then E was added at the last meeting, but nothing significant since then, and I haven't received any comments.
In that case, I would move a third and final reading of ordinance 1-15-2018A.
Second. Any comments?
I'd just like to reiterate that I think at the very least, a provision of commercial agricultural use appropriate.
Local call, please.
Rose?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Brad Bush?
Yes.
We're on to the motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Should've sent out the email, everybody had a chance to review this afternoon, it's all in front of us. Move approval of the claims list as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next item, reports. Mount Vernon's report. Chief, is there anything that you would like to draw our attention to in your report?
Nothing additional.
Is there anybody that has any questions for Chief in regards to his report? Nope, all right. Mount Vernon's public works report. Nick, I'll ask the same of you.
Nothing to add.
I'll ask the same in council, any questions for Nick?
One other, one question, I mean, it's not to your specific report, but just something that Chris brought up and didn't seem appropriate at the time, but we're getting ash trees. As we go through the city and we're doing the trimmings, as we prolong the life of these trees, have we, and if we have enough ground here, if it was before my time, but put into place some phased removal, so that we're taking a few out each year as we get to those, or, I mean, instead of, we prolong, we prolong, we prolong, and now we got to take them all out in like a two-year deal or something?
The difficult part, well, to answer your question, yes, Nick, is, as they're treating the ash trees, we're inventorying the ash trees, and then getting a state or condition of those ash trees as we go along. The unfortunate part about ash trees is they are quite big and somewhat difficult to take down, so our staff will likely be unable to deal with most of them. to take down, so our staff will likely be unable to deal with most of them. So, you know, as Nick and I have talked, I mean, we'll continue to, I don't know, we've removed about five or six trees per year, give or take.
My concern just being that at some point the Emerald Ash Board is going to take it out of our hands and so as long as we're in a proactive, as we go along, kind of bubble within.
Thus far, we've found one tree that we've injected in the past that has an Emerald Ash Board, where we suspect that it has it. And any tree, it gets a scale of one to five and I believe five is the worst grade and we'll start slowly removing those, but with the intent, we still inject those, so that buys us three years each time we inject them until this, you know, until they become immune to the, what we're injecting them with. Right now, that's our best approach.
According to my memory, like four years ago, you defined a program for this whole thing. I mean, it was just, it was like a complete plan, council approval. Anybody remember that?
I need to remember that. No, I do.
I don't think I'm listening. And so I don't know if that plan has been lost in the changes in mid-step administration, et cetera, but, you know, to your point, I mean, the prior council talked this through and agreed to invest in the inoculation and all the rationale and everything was all laid out and it was all about spreading and removal at the time. And, you know, it's the kind of thing that you need to budget for, right? It should be in the five-year plan from my perspective, right? Based upon all the research and discussion and approval of a program by prior council.
We have, I mean, we are scheduling to remove at least three or four per year. We want to make sure we have a replacement program in place as well for those trees that we are moving. This year, I can say that we didn't get to our three or four simply because we had two rather large maple, maple trees on, let's just off.
Couple on Fifth Avenue.
Yeah.
We've had some major trees that have, you know, old trees that have just seen their life expectancy, so. But I think we'll start scheduling that in the spring and start trying to knock out some of those that have got the worst grade. I know there's one for sure, actually on 10th Avenue, the same area that a lion came down, so I feel bad in that regard, but it's the one tree that we found with Emerald Ash Board in. And our goal is to, as we remove these trees, to plant another one in its place of some sort.
Yeah, just as long as you're being proactive.
Yeah, the $25,000 that you see, and you saw it last year in the CIP, you'll see every three years?
Two years.
Three years.
Two years.
So you'll see that recurrence. It may obviously decrease as we go along because we're treating fewer trees, obviously, as we go, but the diversification of the canopy has been of the utmost importance. So the last time that we planted trees, we had five or six species people could choose from. You know, before it was, there was, did that tell them disease before ash board, so, you know, it's bound to happen, it continued to happen somewhere, so.
Just a percentage in town. I just, I was curious. So I appreciate.
Thanks, Nick.
I just wanted to make a comment, Nick. I've been impressed at how many references in your reports there are to how many things you guys are fixing in-house.
Oh, thank you. Well, some of them, and some of them we have to go to a well shop, but yes.
Yeah, and there's a time and place when, you know, something might be over your head, but.
We attempt and then if we can't, then we take it to an expert. Hopefully, we haven't screwed it up too much in the process. Thank you much.
Hey, Jamie? Can I just say something on that ash board going back to, there was an article or on the news, KWWL, I think it was, they thought in January that a lot of the ash board larva might have been destroyed because of the cold spell. Have you ever heard about that? I've saw it, but that's what they were saying, that some of those trees.
We can all go.
Keep our fingers crossed.
All right. Mount Vernon Parks and Earth Report, Matthew, same with you, sir? Anything you want to bring to our attention?
I'll follow my constituents and nothing to add.
Council, anything? After Mr. Siders? All right, no questions. Move on to discussion items, garbage collection. Chris?
It's getting down to that time where we need to decide how we would like to move forward. Where we adopted or approved a one-year extension to WOFC waste last year. Provided you a letter at the last meeting, it's from WOFC, obviously they'd love to continue to be our operators. Thirteen years is a long time to go out and test the market. There's, you know, there's a lot out there. I think the one thing that we need to discuss, I think the pay to, basically the pay-to-play garbage use that we've got currently has its pluses and it has its minuses, obviously. So I think if we go out there, there's definitely people interested in bidding in Mount Vernon's waste. One is sitting in the audience tonight. They would probably move to a more automated system.
So just, so I understand, they're, you know, kind of talking through it, but so that's basically each house has a recycling bin and a garbage bin and you pay X amount to the city per month, however we structure that.
The tags tend to go away.
Right. And then, so it's, you just fill that up and you don't, but the cost is the same per month, correct?
Yeah, and some of the caveats to that are, you know, the suspension program that we have for those that, you know, goes out, goes away.
Okay.
You know, we're going to be billed, they're going to be billed. Little, little things like that. I think, in my estimation, and it's really hard to compare apples to oranges or apples to apples in this scenario, but, you know, if you're a family that puts out two garbage cans per week, meaning you use two tags per week, there would be savings, most likely, going to the other system. If you're an individual that only puts out two bags or two containers per month, you may not see any savings. You would no longer have to buy tags, but you would pay more, your monthly bill would seem higher to you, only you're not paying for, you know, individually paying for the tags. I want to stress that I have nothing bad to say about WOFC. I've enjoyed working with them for the last two years. Just, it's my job to come in front of you and ask you if you want to go out and test the market, see if the constituents are getting the best price right now. But again, with that, you have to remember there will be some changes.
So there are some other factors involved in this. One of the things that's happening right now, I think, I talked to friends around town, they're actually proud of the fact that they're reducing the number of tags that they're paying for because their efforts are increasing recycling. And I think that anytime we're encouraging use of recycling, it's a good thing.
I certainly agree more with Scott.
I would agree.
The tag program encourages recycling, which is by far the best way to go.
I share my example with Chris. I don't have three kids at home anymore, but even if I did, I mean, I would put out a bag of garbage every two weeks while my recycling bins were just chucked full of pride. Because you can recycle all of everything.
Yeah, when you got a giant bin, just throw stuff in. I mean, it doesn't encourage anything.
And so, you know, when you go to the automated system as well, you don't have to necessarily, it's not one size fits all. So you can do multiple size containers, so you can still encourage that. I mean, you could have...
But you're still paying the same amount, though.
No. You would have, there would be a different amount per container size. Most of them will give you a 96-gallon container for recycling and then, I don't want to speak for anybody, but you could get, I've seen two to three different sizes of garbage containers. They all come with a different cost, obviously, because you're putting less in there. 96 gallons, I think is about the biggest I've seen for residential. But they go down to like 69 or maybe even slightly smaller. So you can still encourage recycling by giving them small containers. The issue that I would ask is, if you do that, then you can, if you want to continue to encourage recycling, then you can require that they only hand out 64-gallon containers for garbage and a 96-gallon container for recycling. So there are, you know, I, like I said, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but there are, I think there's ways to look at doing it both ways outside of the tax system, but again, I...
So in that case, sorry.
No, you go right ahead.
With the large bin for recycling, can you throw every, can you throw glass in with it? Can you intermingle? Is there any change to that? Because I can see that's one area that would make it easier than right now because we are having separate glass.
That has to do with the processing of the dog.
Right.
I would think that it would still have to be, but I don't know that.
Pretty sure.
Depends on how you write the contract up. Our contract currently with recycling specifies glass, obviously, is having to be separated out and not be part of our overall recycling, but I believe, and I can't say this with any certainty, I believe that you can write your contract in such a manner where they recycle everything. The issue that I would have is wanting to make sure, follow up, that the recycling was getting recycled.
Yeah.
And like I said, you know, you have an individual in the audience that is, would be a competitor, obviously, to WOFC, but they give containers and you can ask him specifically, would you, can you commingle glass?
Yes, and if you, my name's Dave Shaw, I'm the municipal marketing manager of Waste Management. And we secured a copy of the current contract and specifications last year from the city in the hopes of being able to present some alternatives. We're critically aware of the fact that of all communities, Mount Vernon stands, Ben Shul is above the rest of having fostered and encouraged recycling for decades. And the way it's been done is certainly the way it's been done, it was the way it was commonly done to start. And what we're offering or would like to offer, should this go out to bid, is proposals that would enhance that program, make it simpler. Yes, everything would be combined in one container, nothing would have to be said for the science of glass could be involved. It's called commingling recycling strictly for that reason. We've had success in duplicating this elsewhere in the eastern Iowa market, our Cedar Rapids operating with great success, and it stimulates recycling. One thing we've learned about recycling, doing more of it than anyone else in North America, is it's a learned behavior. And then we look at it as a learned behavior. Most learned behaviors respect, respond more to positive reinforcement than negative, not say that you're, you know, it's going to cost you more if you don't do this. It's just that it requires education, constant touches and everything else. And we have that in depth to offer to the city. So we can offer a program that is simpler, easier, has a greater, a great physical appearance on collection there in the city and will foster, we have the data to show this does foster increase in recycling and a greater diversion. So we'd be more than happy and will, of course, always follow what council's lead. We'd love to be able to offer a presentation or a proposal to that effect.
If you have any questions, David?
Let's say, we do have other communities in the eastern Iowa area that admit this transition, admit it successfully.
Part of the issue I see is using a large multinational company versus a small-town operator, quite honestly. You bring on, it's a lot of expertise. So that's a decision we have to make too, besides what size bins and what we're going to keep tags and so on and so forth. Data, do you track data, like how much you would send from a community, like Mount Vernon, that is garbage and how much is diverted, what weight and so on?
Absolutely.
Diversion rates, I'm very curious about the diversion ratio of a community, and I've done it in a business, in a work situation, as a department, but the data should be there and I just wonder, Waste Management, is that something that you can gather to track how much Mount Vernon diverts out, keeps out of landfill?
Oh, true. In most situations where we're, and all I do is do is deal with municipalities for a couple. In most municipal contracts, there is a requirement that we offer monthly or at the bare minimum core bill reporting on the amount of solid waste collected, the amount of yard waste collected, the amount of recyclables collected. We also have to be able to produce at any time for any of our client customers, scale data on what the actual scale weight's of the collected commodities were, whether they're trash, recycling or recyclables, where they were taken and how to process. We commit to our customers that anything that is provided as a recyclable, as long as it's not contaminated, we will make it to an end use. But is that data available? Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chris, it turns to what you need from the council?
I don't need anything tonight. I just, you know, this is a big step, big conversation for this community and I needed you to know and understand that there's interest, obviously, outside of our current contractor in the city, which could mean possibly lower rates to our citizens. I feel like it's my job to at least bring that in front of you, but your talking changes, there's no doubt about that. So I wanted to basically get this on as a discussion item, saying, here's what's going on. I really need... We probably need to make a decision by the end of March, very first part of April at the latest, as far as direction. If you want to, if we're looking at, or doing a renewal, WOFC would typically do, I mean, they typically do a five-year renewal.
Is there a subcommittee that would be appropriate to take on this investigation, like a recommendation from Mayor of Cal?
I thought about this, finance might be. As far as Fitzgo, finance committee would be the best, just because it deals with budgetary numbers. We don't have another committees, but specific to, I mean, outside of personnel safety.
There's another infrastructure committee here?
Infrastructure, yes, but it's kind of, you know, like two dartboards, throw, learn it.
Well, I personally just feel like this is the kind of thing that should be handled in work sessions or by committees, et cetera. I mean, council deciding we want to investigate is one thing, but, yeah, that's my opinion. I was, I was a part of that thirteen, I mean, thirteen years ago and I thought it was a, I thought it was a good process. Just to have plenty of detailed discussion and examination without it being hurried, which is the sense that I get when things come in front of council. There's not quite the willingness to take the time to have a detailed discussion, et cetera, that I think is appropriate for this kind of improvement.
And I'm fine with that. Like I said, the reason for it being under discussion is just to get the discussion started.
Chris, can I ask, since you've been on board, have you, what have you heard from our citizens? Have you heard any complaints? Have they complained about costs? Have they complained, you know?
If I hear any complaint, and I don't want to sound like I hear it a ton, because I don't, if I hear any complaint, I do get generally, why do I pay X amount of dollars on my bill per month and then I have to buy garbage tags? The city's double dipping. We're not double dipping, there's a specific charge for that 1050 and then the tags on top of that. So if I hear, you know, if I hear a complaint, it's more of an education process I have to go through. The rest of the complaints, I think, are going to be somewhat the same regardless of the hauler that you go with. You know, people are inevitably going to get missed, people are not going to put it out when they're supposed to put it out and blame the hauler. We get that pretty frequently. The most complaints that we get is on lead pickups, more so than garbage. The recycling bins are smaller. Even though people can have multiple, most will have a couple, so they're, those that have lids, you know, do fairly well. Every once in a while, you go complain about recycling blowing in my neighbor's yard, but, and these are all limited. And Meredith answers more phone calls than I do in a given day, I mean, accurate. We don't receive a ton of phone calls. We don't receive a ton of phone calls.
We don't get a ton of complaints. We think they're actually, it's a problem that only delivers all the revenue due, but we don't actually get a ton of lead pickup calls. I think most people call regarding to pick up and stuff is, they perhaps put it out on time, or didn't put a tag on it at time, or didn't put a tag on it at all. I mean, the, the WOFC gives us a list of everybody they pass and why they pass them, so we know when they call that it didn't have a tag, or it wasn't out on time, or something like that. And most generally, it's, they're just, it's not always accurate information. So we don't get a ton of negative calls. The, the, wondering about the 1050 charge, people don't understand that sometimes when they pay with the tags, we have to explain to them that that goes towards your recycling, which you don't put tags on, and then city services like mowing, snow removal, you know, every, every lead pickup, brush pickup, all the services you get from the city is that 1050 charge.
And I haven't heard anything from, like, Gary's, for example, because I know at one point they weren't happy with, people would come in and buy a tag. There's still, I think, I would say he's still upset, obviously, about having to eat the, the fee, the credit card fee for people that buy tags, but yeah, you know, it's relative to what you know. Like I said, do I, do I believe there's potential cost savings? Yes. I don't have anything bad to say about WOFC's services at all. They're, they've always been really responsive. Brad, who owned WOFC prior to, still does a majority, or my share of the work in town, and is responsive to, to all the calls. It's random.
What I'd like to see, though, I do it, I, I try to recycle about as much as I can, so I end up putting a bag of tin cans and glass and aluminum, and I take it to City Cart and do it that way. So if there'd be another way of getting, so that all these are actually recycled, because I know, you know, putting your glass, people don't do that very much, they'll throw them away. They'll throw their aluminum cans away rather than go that extra mile. If they could all throw it into one bin, it would go a lot, lot further into recycling. Right now, that isn't getting done. So I think we're missing out on aluminum and tin and glass a lot of it.
I just want to say that the glass is separated only because it is recycled. It's separated because people throw glass in the bottom of their recycling bin, and when WOFC takes the recycling, which you can have as many containers you want, they don't even have to be our recycling containers, it's just a hard side. If you want to use a vapor made coat, you can. But when they reach in to separate it into the truck, because the truck is a part, they don't want to get cut. And that's why they answer, great glass, but everything else can be combing both. And it is dictated.
But a lot of people aren't doing it. A lot of people are just throwing it in the garbage, that's what I'm saying. They won't go to, they won't.
I think for, for tonight's purposes, I just wanted to get you, here are the options. There is interest in our, our city. It's not a conversation we talk about very often.
I'd say we have responsibility to at least look at it. But I would agree with Marty that either we push it to a committee to look into, because I'd be interested in something similar to, like the Iowa Policy Project provided us when there was a minimum wage discussion, before the legislature pushed it, stepped in. That study that they provided on a county versus state basis. You know, if there are numbers of, and I'd be surprised if there were, but numbers of communities like ours going from a tag system to an automated system, and what did, you know, their questions were regarding the amount of recycling, the amount of garbage, you know, all of that and stuff. So either work sessions for us or a committee, but I think we do have responsibility to at least have a look at it, because we have it for a long time.
My preference in something like this would be a work session, simply because I know a lot of work went into this previously, at a committee of maybe two of you. I think you can probably come to a consensus with the two individuals that are typically in there, but at a work session, we can have rather candid conversation within an entire group without being forced into making a decision. We don't have any work sessions scheduled for March right now, so.
Yeah, I think this warrants one, as long as it's been. Anything else? Chris, any other questions for Chris?
As long as we're delving into this area, I think something that we need to consider is, is compost. And I know we're just muddying the waters here more, but I think that's going to be an expected civic utility offering eventually. And it may be a, a group site at some point, where you take your compost, too, for now, but I think is coming eventually. We at least need to consider it and at least talk to it, talk to a vendor, whoever it is, about the possibility. What do you say, Scott?
No, because it's, I was thinking maybe we could retrofit the lead back, which is not going to come.
There's an idea right there.
Anything else? I got a whole item here for budget, anything else?
I just, I kept it there, if you have questions. Had a little bit longer to look at all of the documents that I've handed to you thus far. Nothing has really changed with this, minor modifications in numbers as we go to plug them in to the state forms, but nothing significant in that regard.
When do we need, I mean, I know we affirmed the 1299, but when, is there a next step where we need to affirm the entire budget that's been set up, or is?
The budget documents will actually be at the next council meeting. The public hearing was set, so that the state form that we, we publish in the paper is when, kind of that line of demarcation where you can't make a change to 1299 unless you want to go down. But the other budget documents, budget forms will be there at the next meeting. We have to certify by the 15th. And you can still, as a council, make modifications, you know, on budget numbers down any time throughout the year. You can even go beyond, you just have to amend the budget during that process.
All right, next item, reports. Just from a mayor's perspective, just wanted to send a quick thank you to Chris and Chief, as well as the police force in terms of the contract negotiations that we went through here recently. As HR, Labor Guide, that was the most painless contract negotiations that I've ever gone through. So kudos to both sides. There was reasonable, very respectful offers made on both sides, which really alleviated what can be a very painful process. So again, kudos to both sides for that. With that said, anything from a council committee standpoint?
I would just like to send my condolences to the Peters family. That was a sad thing there. I greatly respect that man. He was a good man.
Chris, your report?
Confidence will be here tomorrow. Tomorrow night will be the kickoff. Did send letters out to all of the Elyon owners in that general vicinity. I've actually talked to two of them, and one is coming in tomorrow, so they're very appreciative of getting out ahead of us and trying to get them involved. A week from tomorrow, the Wellness Center fundraising group will have their kickoff meeting. Had a positive meeting or presentation to enhance Iowa this past Wednesday. Asked us to get some more money from Lynn County, so I made that request today. We'll see how that goes. I will be back to their meeting in March to see what progress has been made on our application at that point. We did meet, it's not on my report, we did meet with the architects today, and they've gone through the construction estimation, so they have a third-party construction estimator go through the numbers that they provided, and their numbers so far are spot-on, which is always positive. That usually gives me pause when we get to this point, because most of the time, the architects' numbers are slightly low. So that was good news today. And then, if, speaking of committee, if the Finance Committee could be willing to meet with me on March 5th before, so 5:30, EMC Insurance, who has a local representative here, would at least like to have a conversation about the possibility of switching city insurance carriers, currently with ICAP, so.
It works for me.
You're looking at me like I'm on it, so.
It's me and Marty.
I also added.
You said 5:30?
Anytime, I mean, council.
Yeah, that's right.
Typically leave, so whenever you can get here.
I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Josh, that Chris did, representing us in front of that enhanced Iowa presentation. Not only the presentation part of being there, but the work to get us to that point, put us in a good position to be looked favorably on. And we sat through a couple other presentations, which were not that, well, that favorably looked at, so. Thanks much, Chris, for getting us to that point.
When is that next meeting, Chris?
I'll look, it's the second week of March, I believe, in martial time. Yes, I didn't want to get up very bad after the first year. It was brutal.
It's always good or bad, when you know you're at least prepared, when you can look like roses. Anything else? No further business?
I got a question for both of you guys. Here's, first one I got in the dog park, is that mostly volunteer that's on that?
Thanks for coming, Dave.
Is there a way of getting more, you know, entryway to be?
Continue?
More spread out?
This is so much.
I walk out, they would, they switch to themselves.
Find that, I just started using it a couple weeks.